Okay, this November 6, 2019, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. I'd like to invite David Goldsmith to the podium to welcome us.
Good evening, everyone. David Goldsmith, Principal here at Mohearamit. On behalf of the entire Mohearamit community, I'd like to welcome everyone to our school. It's a special school board meeting here because we are inaugurating and celebrating the opening of our school, new front entrance, and the landscaping that goes with that. I was really excited to be able to give everyone a tour, and we get to talk about the incredible safety enhancements that have been given to our school and the beautiful, community-oriented aesthetics that all of that safety comes with. It's been a really great beginning to our year. The entrance has been a big part of that. We're really excited about it, so thank you very much to the board and to everyone who helped make that possible. We have some special guests I'd like to introduce. Paul and Denise Puleo, the leaders of the Abenaki-Pennacook Tribe. We've been working with them to really bridge and make the connections between our name, Mohearamit, which comes from Sagamore, Mohearamit, who lived in this area, Mohearamit Hill over to the side, and really understand what it means to be named after a Native American and what that means to our current Native Americans here in the community, what it means to all of our students, what it means to our teachers and our staff and everyone in the area. And so, we've been working with the Puleos to understand those connections, make connections to the landscaping around our school, to the deep and rich history that our school has for maple sugaring, which is mirrored in the deep connection that the Native Americans of this area have to sugaring. And they are also helping with some new additions to our school, and when they come, they'll talk about, you see all these words here over on the side, which will be added to the front of our school in the very near future. So I'd like to welcome and thank, of course, Paul and Denise Puleo for all the help they've given us and hear what they have to say. Thank you.
[applause] Why, Nido Ba, Wudelusin, Denise Puleo, Sagamasqua, Kawasak Band of the Pennacook Abenaki People, Wudelusin, Paul Puleo, Sagamo, Kawasak Band of the Pennacook Abenaki People, Neona Aiyan, Alton, New Hampshire, Ndakina. Hello, my name is Denise Puleo. I'm the head female speaker of the Kawasak Band of the Pennacook Abenaki People. This is Paul Puleo, head male speaker, and we are the chiefs of the Kawasak Band. And what else did I say? We are from Alton, New Hampshire, located in our traditional territories of Ndakina. We just really want to thank you for taking the time, doing the research, and not just making the school a safer place, but for making it even more educational by introducing an Indigenous perspective to education. It really means a lot to us. I know it means a lot to the next generation, and I hope it means a lot for the children and the lessons that they learn at such a beautiful institution. Now, the words that we had, we had sent a long list of words. These are the words that they had chosen. You couldn't have picked a longer word by picking "teacher."[222.12][222.12][laughter] That's one of our longer ones that were on the list. But I apologize if I do mispronounce these. I do talk like a two-year-old in our language. Many of our fluent speakers have died off. We are relearning our language using dictionaries and some recorded language speakers that still exist. So I do struggle with some of the words until I really memorize them well. But "teacher" is akake gumiweino. "Student" is wawazin. Come to learn is badzedzam. And "look and," I'm sorry, "look and listen" is nina, I'm sorry, kina ta kita. Kina is look, ta is and, and kina is listen.
Talk about the symbols.
So the symbols that were chosen, the one on the left is called the wisdom curl. The two cupped ends show that the balance in life, where we work, we must play; where we teach, we must learn, that everything in life has a balance. The point in the center shows us our ups and downs of life. And the tobacco flower, which that's what it is on top because that's our symbol for prayers and for hope, shows that through our ups and downs, we have hope that we'll come through them as better people. So together, we call that a wisdom curl. Now, the symbol on the right, which looks like a bird, because it is, is called the thunderbird. All right? And a thunderbird is a mythical creature that, dependent upon who you ask, there's two definitions of the thunderbird. One is it was a mythical creature that used to fly over people here, and we were afraid of them. We believed they were the pterodactyl. All right? Or there's the other school of thought that believes the thunderbird is the creator that came down from the sky. So there's two different schools of thought. I kind of like the pterodactyl myself, but that's just personal opinion.
The symbol of the American, too.
Right, and it's also a symbol that was only found here in New Hampshire. So there's a copper breastplate of that design that's held here in the state, and it's the only one of its kind, and it's specifically from the state of New Hampshire, which is another reason why we feel it's so special to us. Anything else you'd like to add?
If you haven't figured out, in our culture, the women do all the speaking.[397.21][397.21][laughter]
It's usually not that way. I'm usually the quiet one. But we really want to thank you.
We thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
Kisiwini. Great to meet you.
Okay, moving to the approval of the agenda, I'd like to suggest one change, that after the public comment, we ask Chief Curz to take his place on the agenda since he's here, rather than having him wait through the other parts of the meeting. So with that change, I was wondering if I could have a motion to approve the agenda. Denise?
I'll motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Second by Brian. All's in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor. The agenda is approved. Move to public comment.
Hi, I'm Dean Rubin from Lee. Wanted to thank the district. We, the Lee Sustainability, had a wonderful committee, had a wonderful event at Mastway on Saturday, a fix-it workshop in association, I think, with the Lee Library and the Lee Conservation Committee, if I'm getting that right. And I'm looking forward to bickering about the bill.
No need.
[laughing]
Yep, the decker from zero. Too much.
Are there public comments? Rob?
Hi, Robert Sullivan from Durham. I just was, Tom had asked me to come and speak about a group that is getting together of people in all three towns to help push awareness and to get out the vote for this middle school project. Obviously, it's a huge ask of the taxpayers, but it's a really important need. So we've gotten a lot of the usual suspects together, some former school board members, active people in town, teachers, and we're trying to spend the next four months to make sure that we get that high bar of 60 percent votes achieved. So we've been meeting regularly. It's going to be every two weeks we meet. We have a lot of talented marketing people, PTO members, and a lot of different connections in town. So we exist, I want the board to know that, and you're welcome to join in the meetings whenever. We have them every two weeks. Tom has been attending the meetings, so he's aware of what we're doing, as has Brian. So if there's any questions or future direction or advice, we're all ears on how we can help make the middle school thing happen. So, thanks.
Thanks. Are there public comment? Hearing none? If we could move to Chief Curz. Thank you for coming.
So if we could just do a quick introduction. You'll notice that some of the policy reviews are under the superintendent report because our intention tonight is really to get, to inform and get additional guidance from the board, so this isn't about a first read or a second read. This is really about what information the board needs to move forward.
Well, thank you for inviting us. Your school resource officer for the middle school and the high school, Tom Kilroy, is here with me so that if there's any questions in that regard, we can be responsive to you. I had been visited by Al Howland and Dan Klein about a month ago or so to discuss discussions that you were having regarding searches of vehicles on school property. And I'm glad that we're able to have this open forum so that there's no misunderstandings or, and I get to explain the philosophy of the Durham Police, who obviously, because of the high school and the middle school located in Durham, we would have the jurisdiction of those matters. So if I understand this correctly, and you're going to need to adjust me if I don't, what we're talking about is school personnel searching vehicles and the authority that you have to do that. And if, not to be the lawyer, and I'm sure you vetted what you need to vet regarding your policy, if there was a reason that would prompt a search of a student's vehicle while on the school property, that policy that you would follow is your policy you would follow. What we would hope, not required, but what we would hope, is that the school resource officer, being able to utilize the very definition of what his role is here, "resource," would be able to advise what or what not might be able to happen as far as if there was something that was encountered. Candidly, it's your decision or your administrator's decision to do the search, but we might, for instance, discuss the opportunity, just rather than even doing the search, talking to the student about it and their parents about what may or may not be the reason for behind the search. That being said, while, what I want to be clear about is that our desire in an educational format is one of education. If the teacher or the superintendent or the principal, whoever it was, was going to be doing the search of a vehicle under the auspices of the school, were to encounter something, we would want to convey the advice to that person that if they encounter, I mean, let's, let me be way out on an extreme here. Let's say they were looking for something in the car that they had heard about or whatever, and they rolled back and they saw a weapon there, a gun of some kind. What we would like, and we would like to have that clear, is that the search stop and then consult with the school resource officer, Tommy Kilroy, and then we could proceed and get a search warrant. Now, what that would do is at least illegally allow us to utilize the evidence that would be, that we would be seized. That doesn't mean that there'd be a prosecution in this. That discussion could take place, but at least it would, if that was part of the decision to go forward with a prosecution, we could at least utilize it in a juvenile setting. Now, and again, not to get too far afield here, even in a juvenile setting, the whole structure and goal is one of rehabilitation, correcting the actions that were encountered in, whether it was psychological or whatever, it gives leverage not only to the school, the parents, and the police department, but it can allow things to happen that would be beneficial to the youth. So our policing philosophy in Durham is not one of prosecute everybody we encounter. It's what's best for that particular situation. And that's, I at least wanted you to hear that from me. Our policy is there, it's transparent. We could have a, if you want to spend the next six hours or so on constitutional law, we would be, well, Tommy would stick around and do that. I'm going home.[884.54][884.54][laughter] But the point is, is that we want to answer any questions. We want to make sure that there's an understanding from the school board that the Durham Police takes their responsibility in having the police authority to do searches with appropriate governmental oversight. In other words, a search warrant signed by a judge and reviewed as serious. We don't take this lightly at all, and we understand the significance of this, which is why, in the first instance, I would urge you as the police chief to consult with Tommy, use him as a resource, and like any good lawyer-type situation, take his advice or don't, but at least you would hear it. And I'm not really sure what your discussions specifically were, but I wanted to be here, again, firsthand, face, how's it going, what do we need to know type thing.
Denise?
So, thank you very much for coming tonight. So if our policy said if a search is indicated, school personnel will first consult with the school resource officer prior to engaging in the search, is that the kind of wording that you would recommend?
It would come after, right?
Well, I think if there's a, if there's a desire or there's a thought that a car wants to be searched.
Right.
It would be nice, we think. I don't think it's, your policy should say "must," "will," you know, that kind of thing, but the option is there for you to take advantage of this resource that's there.
Okay.
Clearly, Tommy has a lot more experience in doing search and seizures than a school teacher does and vice versa than him being in a classroom teaching a class. But, so the resource is there, and then at least everything is on the table and decisions can be made.
Question. I think one of the concerns we had as a board, and I don't want to speak for everyone else, but it was generally a topic that we all brought up, was the use of discretion. And you did touch on it as far as, you know, for example, if a student is charged with a crime, it could affect their ability to get financial aid in college, maybe get into college, and we want to make sure that if it's a, I think our concern is if it's something that, like you said, is correctable, or maybe it's a sign of a problem that could be dealt with outside of law. I mean, is that something that you take into effect in your discretion?
Absolutely. And, you know, we're not going to get in a confrontation with the school. We're all going to be on the same page when a decision comes out, without question. That being said, anyone under the age of 18 is a juvenile, and it's a juvenile incident. There's no crimes, in quote, in juvenile justice. It's a juvenile matter. So, you know, I understand, I filled out fast forms for my child, too, and it talks about those drug things, but that doesn't mean there'd be a charge that would come out of it. Now, that being said, for instance, if someone thinks there's like a couple of joints or an ounce of marijuana in a car, let's say, and they do the search, I mean, we might suggest that we bring him in and talk to him or her about what may be in their car. That being said, if the teacher goes in there and pulls back and there's a, you know, 200 pounds of marijuana, we'd like to talk about that.[1111.73][1111.73][laughter]
Yeah, and I don't want to think that we're trying to divide schools.
Nope, and I'm not hearing that.
We want to work in tandem, obviously, but really, the, we just want to know when we design this policy, what our, how that relationship works, and if we are on the same, and we don't want to put anybody at risk either, but we also know there's a, there's a line that could be crossed.
Well, under-
But also, there are seniors that are 18.
Right.
Where that's not going to come into play either.
It won't. You're absolutely right. And again, this is why I think a search might be the last thing that occurs, but it may be the first thing, depending on the circumstances, and that's the point. I think what we want to instill is an atmosphere of collaboration on this issue. It's your school, you make the decision. We can only do a search based on probable cause, which is a very, very high standard. And then we have to go to a judge to get it. So based on rumor control in a high school, it's not going to get us into a car. It will get your staff into a car, but that evidence, if they pull it out, cannot be utilized in a court of law, because it's, it doesn't, it's, the search is based on your policies, not on law.
So, one of the concerns I had is whether a principal, and this isn't reflective on any particular person, is really trained to do a search. And so I think what I hear you saying is if it gets to that point to have, work with the SRO, you know, so that this person isn't doing something that they're not trained to do, or that it's kind of unknown territory or unfamiliar territory for them.
Right. I mean, my vision of a search by a school official would be literally that. You know, getting in the car and maybe looking wherever he or she wants to look. But we could never do that. We have, there's a plain view doctrine which allows us to look in a car, and if you see something that's there that's visible, that's, there's a law that, or a guidance that gives police officers the authority to go further. But, I mean, a search is that. It's just depending on what they're looking for. And again, it may not be necessary to do that. If, for instance, the police have some information on, but not enough to do probable cause, we do routinely what we refer to as a knock and talk, where we go and, "How's it going? We've heard this about this, and you want to talk to us about it." That might be the best thing to do. We might suggest that as being, "Let's bring in Junior and talk to him or her." Obviously, the parents might want to be involved at that point, and we'll go from there. Maybe the parents will say, "Listen, then go search the car." Maybe they won't. But if I understand it correctly, your policy allows you, if you're going to park a vehicle on the, on school property, there's a, almost an implied consent that the school can search the vehicle. And that's been vetted by your legal counsel, so that's fine. But that doesn't mean we can use. In fact, it means exactly the opposite. Once, you can't be an agent of the police to do that. So it's a separate, totally separate thing. Anything that the principal or whoever is that's doing the searches, that they're doing under that auspices, cannot be used in prosecution. Period. It can be used, obviously, in whatever it is that the school wants to do for counseling, for, you know, making a contract with the parents and with the kid. That would be appropriate. But we would urge, you know, I mean, in a, I use the example, it's very far-fetched, but, so the teacher goes into the car and pulls back a blanket, and there's an Uzi there. We might want to get a search warrant to now go further and at least have the ability to utilize that in a court of law. Doesn't mean we're going to do it, but it's an option that we now have that we wouldn't have if we didn't do it appropriately.
How long does it typically take you to obtain a warrant in a situation like that?
Several hours. We've got to write it first, and then it has to be approved. Then we have to find a judge. Two to five hours. But we would put a police officer on the car, or whatever it is we were getting a search warrant for, so that nothing would change. We'd take over that situation at that juncture.
You could prevent a student from leaving with the car?
Yes.
That's obviously going to be passed.
Yeah, that's, yes, we can do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Tommy.
Welcome, welcome to-
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for moving us on the agenda.[1434.65][1434.65][laughter]
Okay, we need a motion to approve the 10, 16, 19 minutes, and Laura's not here.
So what's going on right now is you have three people listening to the board discussion and trying to make sure that we get all of the relevant motions and seconds and so forth this evening. So if you have corrections, hopefully between the three geniuses, we will capture them accurately. But we also have the video, so if we fail, we can always go back to the video.
Okay. I had, I had one correction that-
Oh, well, I was just going to make the motion.
I'm sorry, glad.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the October 16 regular meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, second. Brian? Are there corrections? I'm sorry.
I have, I have one. It's on page five, and it says, "Tom Nuker added that the administrators are bound to turn in, over, turn over to law enforcement any illegal findings." And so that wasn't, I really asked the question. I think Dr. Morse gave that answer. In response to a question from Tom Nuker, Superintendent Morse stated that administrators are bound to turn over to law enforcement any illegal findings. I think that's what the discussion was. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So I can, I have that if you want to.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you.
Other corrections? Denise, did you have?
No.
Okay. Okay. With that one correction, can we have a vote? All those in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor.
We appreciate the fact there was only one correction tonight.
Yeah. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
I have a few announcements to make. I want to just, ooh, excuse me. Are we still hooked up? Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to let everybody know that next week, we will be having vape education happening at the high school. Every class will be going through a presentation by Breathe New Hampshire, and then on Friday evening at 6:30 at the high school in the auditorium, they will be doing a presentation for the community. So if any parents or community members are interested in learning more about vape education, again, it's at 6:30 in the auditorium in the high school. Right now, the ninth-
That's not this Friday.
That's next Friday. Yes, next Friday. We have the ninth grade involved this week and next week in connect training, and connect training is peer-to-peer education around suicide prevention. We're very excited about having this program be a peer-to-peer program. It's similar in some ways to the bystander training that we do, which is peer-to-peer. We find that to be very effective for our students. And so that is occurring with the help of the Counseling Department and Kim Felch. Habits, there are two committees that I would like to just speak a little bit about. One is our Habits of Work and Learning Group. They've been actively involved with gathering information regarding habits of work and learning, talking with members of our community and colleges and universities as well about what it is, what it is business industry and higher ed is looking for in graduates as they leave high school. What are the types of habits of work and learning are they looking for? Are they seeing, and how we can work together with them on this? And so we had a group come to the high school at the Last Teacher Workshop Day to meet with our committee, our Habits of Work and Learning Committee, and we had a panel discussion, and it was quite enlightening. It was very, very enriching, and that group will come back at some point to speak at a school board meeting about their work that they're doing. We also have a group that is actively involved with academic integrity and our academic integrity rules at the high school. This group is faculty and student-based, and they are looking through the rules and looking at what is out there in colleges and universities to see if what we are doing at the high school is, and the rules that we currently have in place are a reflection of our mission and our vision, as well as where students are going in their future. And so that committee has been doing a lot of research and gathering of information and having a lot of deep discussions around academic integrity. And that, that committee has been, this is their second year that they're doing this work. So they will also be coming at some point shortly to speak with you about some of the work that they're doing and what they've discovered. And the last thing I'd like to just let you all know about, we have an exciting new trip that is being offered by Sarah Cathy, who is a science teacher at the high school. She has worked with the, with the Grant Teton Science School in Jackson Hole to have a 10-day trip in the summertime for students to go to the Rocky Mountains for place-based study of ecosystems and geologic features. And they will be doing that in, at Yellowstone and also at Grant Teton National Park. So we're really excited. We have about 10 or 11 students who are going to be going on that trip, and she is actively working again with the, with the science school out at Jackson Hole to organize some of the camping and the different types of work that the kids will be doing. That opportunity, she's working with Sean Peschel around possible credit- credit earning, that students could be using that experience along with other work for some credit to be earned. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. How are you?
Evening.
Ms. De Lowe, interim principal for Mast Way. I just wanted to share a couple of special events that have occurred at Mast Way since I've seen you last. One is the Halloween Social. I'd love to do a public shout-out for the Mast Way PTO. They do a phenomenal job working with Mast Way staff, as well as parents and the greater school community, and they put on a very fun event that is extraordinarily well-attended and a lot of fun to be a part of. Some of the family costumes, it's not just the children in costumes. This was a family event, families coming in in costumes, and it was really, really a lot of fun. The second event I wanted to share with the board is we had a TIGER assembly that was organized through our school counselor, and that is a group out of Plymouth University who comes and teaches about kindness. Each letter, the T-I-G-E-R stands for different types of things that teach about kindness. E comes to mind, teaching about empathy and things of that nature. A great full-school event, and those are the two special events I thought I would share with you. Any questions about Mast Way?
Thanks.
Congrats to Mohairat. This was a special night.
Others? No? Announcements, commendations, and comments from the board? Denise?
I have two. The first, I'd like to thank the PTO, Mohairat PTO, for providing the wonderful refreshments tonight. They were wonderful, what I sampled. Secondly, I just wanted to make a comment about our last meeting and what happened in terms of debating the policies. And I started thinking about it afterwards in terms of the process that we use for approving policies. And what I thought of is that going forward, if at the policy committee level, we're not unanimous, I mean, there's a lot of policies that are very routine, or, you know, legally, we have to do this, or what have you, and there's no, there's no controversy around them. But if we do have a policy such as the car searches, or the use of facilities, where it doesn't appear that all policy committee members are on the same page, that rather than bring it to the full board for a, for a first--
First read?
Yeah, first read, thank you. For a first read, that it be brought forward to the full board just for discussion, so that we can get a sense of where the full board is standing in relation to that policy, and then bring it back to policy committee for whatever rewrite that we need to do before bringing it to the full board again for first read. I just think it was so confusing last time, and I think that could have been avoided if we had used that procedure. So, that would just be my suggestion moving forward.
No.
No?
The ink has just barely dried on the check that the town of Durham gave for the Oyster River Drive property. But last Saturday, there was already a working group out, and so the, it's about 26 or 27 people that were there. And the initial trail that runs through Orchard River Drive all the way to East Boss Farm, we did the beginnings of that, and it'll, we'll come back there and do some hard pack to make the trail permanent. It's really amazing that we have the resource of Alan Snyder and a great group of people to help work on that. And it's, it's a commitment that in a cycle now, probably every two weeks, we're going to have work parties going out and working on our trail. So, it's really great. So, just, again, it was a, a great project, and it's not, not going to be used. That's good.
I'd just like to second that because I, I signed the form to sign over 23 acres. I've never, never had that experience before. And it's, and it's, you know, that land had been really not used, did not developed. And I did try to, before, it was great to have the trail system, because I tried to take my dog on that trail, and we got lost. And I think they're going to have trails that are really effective. Thanks to the people you mentioned, thanks to Kenny, you and you for being on that committee, thanks to Alan Snyder, and also Dennis Meadows, who did a huge, huge job on that. So, thanks, thanks to him. Just a couple other things. I've submitted the resolution to the School Board Association on, on guns in schools. I got a cosponsor from Nottingham and Dover. There are other places that contacted me, but I, these, these people were able to actually cosponsor. So, that's going to be, you know, an assembly meeting in January. I also did want to mention that I will not be here on the next meeting. Denise will be running the meeting. I have a conference. And I talked with Jim, because we talked briefly about having a meeting after that on the 21st. And so, what we, what we decided was that to take that, and I think the issue was revenue, to talk about revenue, that we could, we could put that on the next regular meeting, regular meeting, which would be December 4th, and so we won't have to have an extra meeting. If we do have to have an extra meeting in, in December, we'll, we can schedule it, but just to try to hold it to our regular meetings, rather than have two meetings back-to-back. So, I think that's, that's what we're going to, what's going to happen there. So, that's, that's all from me. Anybody else? Nope, okay. So, we now, Assistant Superintendent?
Good evening. I just wanted to let you know what's, Friday is a teacher workshop, Dan. I just wanted to give you an indication of the kind of work that our teachers are engaged in on that day. At the two elementary schools, we have all of our specialists and paraprofessional staff engaged in open circle training, which is the SCL program that has been adopted at both those schools. And that's, that's a whole-day training that roughly 40 staff at each building are engaged in. In addition to that, K4 teachers are spending the morning working on developing science curriculum. You may remember that last year was the first year of the implementation of the NGSS science curriculum, and the competencies developed, and they're working to develop their second unit. In the afternoon, there's time to work with the new literacy framework that, that we have developed as a district. So, that's what's happening at the elementary level. Middle and high school, they have vertical meetings in the morning, which brings the middle and high school staff together to, to take a closer look at curriculum topics and actually looking at some student work. And then Suzanne didn't brag about it, but I will. There's a tremendous range of teacher, teacher-run workshops that the high school staff are engaged in at the high school for the rest of the day. Some great stuff, ranging from technology-based stuff to a lot of the PLC work that they have going on. And then at the middle school, there's a lot of data analysis that's taking place. Jay has multiple data committees that are working, that are analyzing data and, and looking for ways to better utilize the, the Bobcat time and the flexible schedule that they've created at the middle school. So, a very full day, lots of great stuff happening, and it's going to be a, a fun time had by all. So, thank you.
Superintendent Sefort?
Thank you, Tom. So, I just want to let the board know where the middle school presentations are happening. We just finished our very first one at the Episcopal Church in, in Durham, and we had a very small group, but we did reach out to a couple of new faces, and that was, that was very, very well-received. The, there's a craft fair at the town office on Saturday, and we'll have a table there. We have a spaghetti supper presentation here at Mohairat on Thursday, and we'll be presenting to the town selectmen on the 18th in Lee. And we have a very first house party scheduled for November 20th. So, that's the activity going on to continue to inform the public about the new middle school. This evening, I also want to bring Sean Peschel up to the microphone to do a quick update on our ELO efforts, our Extended Learning Opportunity efforts. And so, Sean, if you would mind taking it away.
Sure. Just want to provide you a little bit of a story behind the numbers. So, the first thing I want to look at is the, I think, I believe you got this in your packets for this evening. The first is the V-Lax enrollment numbers. You'll see, we do a snapshot five times a year, once at the beginning of the school year, and then once after each of the four quarters. So, five snapshots over time. V-Lax, the variable of time is removed, so students can enroll and complete at their own pace, at their own leisure. So, the V-Lax data I'm sharing with you comes from the end of October, which is roughly the end of quarter one. You'll see during that snapshot what courses students are taking. So, we currently have 82 students taking 90 different courses with V-Lax. Again, at that snapshot in time, it's then broken down into what those courses are and what department they're linked to. We then also have the data showing over the past three years, the longitudinal data of where enrollments have been. So, if you look at the snapshot of the same timeframe in '17, we had 80 students doing 95 courses. In '18, we had 101 students doing 113 courses. And then now, we have 82 doing 90 courses. And then below that, you'll see the breakdown of where they kind of fall within the department, or the departments. What we've seen over time is that students are taking courses that are not offered at Oyster River High School. In the past, they may have been taking courses that were offered just because of schedule, schedule conflicts or time conflicts, but now we're seeing a trend that our students are taking courses that aren't offered. So, you may see, this is kind of what we're seeing. The next data point I want to work with you on or show you is our CTE enrollment. That's broken down again over the three years of me being in the district. In '17, '18, we had 28 students taking, 28 students accessing CTE courses at two centers, Dover and Rochester. And you'll see that they were enrolled in 12 different programs. We then had in '18, '19, a jump from 28 to 38. We now have students accessing all three centers of Dover, Rochester, and Somersworth, and our programs that they're working in or, or being trained in is up to 14. And then now, we're looking at the 1920 school year. We have 53 students that are enrolled in career tech programs at all three centers, and our enrollments have, program enrollments have shifted now to 19. So, we're wondering, you know, why is that happening? How come it's happening? All three centers have completed or are in the process of completing the renovations. Dover has a brand-new, the brand-new high school and tech center. Somersworth had its tech center renovation, and Rochester will be wrapping up, wrapping theirs up around January of '20. It's nice to see that our, with those renovations came new programs. So, that's why we're, we're seeing some enrollments of new programs taking place, because new programs are being offered, some of those being the sports medicine, welding, and biomedical science. So, that's kind of happening with career technical education. We'll see that, seeing that grow. And then lastly, ELO data. During my first year here, we had, in '17, '18, we had 20 students enrolled in ELO opportunities. That's broken down to the 13 in independent coursework. That's, the definitions are at the bottom of the page. You can see those there. Advanced studies, we had four, and then peer instructors, we had three. And then in that, the next year, it grew to 38, and it's broken down. And then this year, in the 1920 school, we have 45 students who are actively involved in ELOs. So, last year, if you're looking at the 38, that was over the full school year. We're already up to 45, and it's only been one quarter of the school year happening. So, we're seeing kind of a rapid growth in ELOs, which has been great. Some student stories behind this is that we're seeing students kind of using a hybrid approach of using some V-Lax courses. For example, I had a student who was interested in marketing but wasn't too sure where he wanted to go with that passion and with that interest. So, we directed him to kind of take that V-Lax course, see what those competencies are, see where his interests and passions are coming, you know, trickling up from, what areas. He's noticing that he wants to be on the social media side, of social media influencer. Ironically, I got a phone call from a nonprofit organization that's looking to rebrand their image through their Twitter feed and through their Instagram accounts. And so, we're now going to be matching him up with that internship, working with that nonprofit to rebrand and re-promote their organization. Another student that I have, that I'm working with, he's a senior now, but last year, he took the fire science program over at Dover. In his mind, the fire science program was going a little too slow to where he wanted to be. He wants to be certified as a firefighter and an EMT like yesterday. So, what he ended up doing is he did fire science one last year as a junior. Over the summer, he completed fire science two through a local training facility, and he currently is going for his certification, certification licensure exams during the fall. He also is currently actively either volunteering or being paid with the Lee Fire Department. So, he's actively working with them. So, we're seeing students kind of taking ownership to their own education, taking ownership to it, and also kind of putting a hybrid model together of how they can access their education to meet their needs and desires. Any questions on the data? Yes, Denise?
Just a question about the internships. Do they, are those all for credit, or are they, no, some of them just for experience?
Mostly for credit, yes. So, the internships are credit-based. We also have non-credit-based experiences of job shadows or informational interviews. Sometimes students who are still investigating and exploring, we may put them out just to kind of, you know, meet with a professional. What's your job entail? What's it look like? Spend a day with them, spend some time with them. That then can grow into an internship that's credit-bearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Michael, go ahead.
I'm just curious about the, the grade breakdown of the CTE students.
Sure. Like, grade level?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. Mostly juniors and seniors. Some of the programs, the engineering program at Dover and, and cosmetology at Dover, open up during sophomore year. There has been legislative change at the state level where all CTE programs are now open to sophomores, but the centers are still working through that. What does that look like? Is it now going to be becoming a three-year program? Is part one, which is typically, you know, part one is typically junior year and, and senior year is part two. Some of them are shifting it down to sophomore year is part one, junior is part two, and then senior year is like the flexible job-work-based learning that could take place through internships. So, the, the centers are still, still working that out at this moment. Yes?
Could you say, what's the difference in independent coursework and advanced studies?
Very good question. So, independent coursework would be, would be something that is unique and that we don't offer. So, say, for example, a student wanted to really look into, you know, Mediterranean history of the Greek Isles and Italy, so on and so forth. We don't offer a course in that. We would find a mentor teacher in our social department that would want to work with a student. The student sometimes typically names a mentor teacher that they want to work with. We have a kind of a matchmaking meeting to see if we want to work together. And then competencies are designed around that student's interests, and then the student does that independent coursework in that field and in that area. Advanced studies would be, we currently offer pottery one, we offer pottery two, but we don't offer a pottery three. So, that student would then work with a teacher-mentor to create those pottery three competencies with the focus that they want to work in, and then they move forward. So, independent, so independent coursework, a bridge, shortened version, is something we don't offer at all. Advanced study is something that we offer above and beyond what, what's being offered.
Uh-huh. Just one thing that, I mean, I've mentioned this before, and maybe it's not practical, is I'm wondering whether you should have thought about having like a senior honors program, you know, where, where you might have a select group, they might have to qualify for it, and then they would maybe have some combination of intensive study and then some performance or some present, you know, something, something structured that way.
Sure. It's like a symposium night or some--
Might be, yeah, it might be a symposium, you know, where you might present your work, which I think is very similar to like seminar work that you might have at a university or--
Yes.
Or like honors work, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So, I just throw that out there, so--
And that's one of the things, too, like a VLO program's still in its infancy, moving into toddler stage. It's still developing. And looking around the state, some schools have just a, have a presentation night or showcase evening where all ELO students present. Could be like a science fair approach or symposium approach. Right now, we've, we've been working on the, on the auspice of, once you're done, you present and, you know, to your panel of, of, of teachers or community partners or mentors, or your own audience. The student gets to choose. So, that's, it's shifting. It could go to a larger event at some point in time. As the program grows, we may be moving in that direction. And we are seeing students, a lot of it has been individualized, where it's, you know, one student working on this, on this independent study, or one student working on this advanced study. We're now starting to see pairs or small groups working together. Their competencies could be the same or could be different, working towards the same content area, but just different focus along the way. So, we are kind of seeing that happen.
Good.
Can you, as far as V-Lax, how does it work with the health and physical education? It seems like it's a hands-on type thing. How does that work under V-Lax? How does it--
I can't answer directly to that. It, it does. I don't know how it does, but it does. I can, I can talk to, I can do some research and get back to you on that one. But it is, there are, you know, the competencies being met, and there's logs of activity and, and methodology, but it does take place.
Sounds like Dean knows.
My daughter took a visit to V-Lax, and it is incredibly rigorous. She had to write reports on running and all sorts of things, and, sorry, and then actually run, and they actually interviewed the parents occasionally to make sure--
Okay.
And she really did, and she did a lot of work. It was amazing.
Okay.
I was skeptical. It sounded like a joke.
Question answered.
And my role with V-Lax two is just kind of monitoring students' progress. It is self-paced, but if they start falling behind, I can see their activities, you know, submission of work and when they last logged in. If I see them kind of slacking and sliding, I give them a little warning, a little pep talk, and kind of move them forward. I do also support in the enrollment process. If students are having troubles logging in or enrolling, I kind of help them in that sense. But other than that, I'm not, no direct instruction or anything like that with V-Lax.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. Oh, one last thing, real quick. Sorry, apologize. One thing that Mr. Allen's often asking for is, you know, it's great that you can see the snapshots of where students are and what's happening, but the completion rate of, you know, how many courses have been completed, we're tracking that this year. And currently, at this point in time, we have 34 V-Lax courses that have been completed. So, I'll keep that, I'll let you know at the end of the year what the total number was, but at this time, it's 34.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Suzanne to come back up to the podium, because we do want to have a, a quick discussion about establishing a graduation date for this year.
So, traditionally, graduation is the first Friday of June. This year, due to the venue or lack of venue, we needed to look at an alternative date as a possible date. So, the-- So the, the, in order for us to have graduation around the same timeframe, we would like to propose for the twelfth. In the past, we have had to wait to make graduation, for a graduation date to ensure that we had met the state standards and also, however, that legislation has changed, and the state has given high schools the opportunity to set the graduation date earlier due to the fact that a lot of high schools are having difficult times finding venues for their, for graduation. So the last day of school right now, if we don't have any snow days, just say that, would be the fifteenth. I, I would like to propose having graduation on the twelfth. So there would be very, there's very, there's a very, really one-day difference between the date of graduation and currently without any snow days, the, the last day of school.
So, go ahead, Denise.
Is that a Friday, or is that?
It is a Friday. The twelfth is a Friday. So it would be the second Friday of June. We are not able to secure a venue for the first Friday of June.
Would it, would it still be the Whittamore Center?
The Whittamore Center is undergoing construction, and that is starting in May, I believe, and so we would need to be looking at Lundholm again.
So I just, to clarify, if you had no snow days, the last day of school's the fifteenth?
Yes.
When is the last, would the last day for seniors be? Because don't they, don't they finish earlier than everybody else, or would that be?
So their week, the week leading up to graduation, there are a variety of different things that occur for seniors. They have their senior trip. They have, we have senior awards. There are a lot of different things that are occurring. They have shortened days due to exams. So that week looks different. So the week for seniors that would look different would be the week of the eighth. So they do, they are in school, they're just, they're just participating in a variety of different activities. It's not a traditional school day.
Okay.
So this requires board action because it's a calendar issue, and what traditionally happens is we try to inform the parents as early as possible, because lots of times relatives are coming from across the country or even from across the world to come in to watch their relatives graduate from high school, so.
I just, I just, I don't, so what if there are snow days?
Doesn't change the...
It wouldn't change the date.
Okay.
It would, it would remain on the twelfth.
Okay. And everything would be able to be completed by the twelfth?
Yes.
And those days before the graduation, they're counted as hours?
Yes.
Okay.
When the students are in school and they're active in school, it's counted as hours.
Okay. Because they have less requirement of hours in their senior year, correct?
Yes. Well, the, they do, yes.
Yeah.
Thirty hours are five days.
So you have a motion?
I'm curious if Yasmin has a opinion about when graduation is.
I just feel like that's kind of late. When was the graduation date last year?
So graduation traditionally and historically for Oyster River has been the first Friday.
First Friday.
However, we don't have a place, we don't have a location to have graduation the first Friday, so we, we would look to the following Friday.
Denise?
Have you ever considered doing it on a different day other than a Friday?
I have considered that. I think that that can, it's a possibility, definitely. I think it can be challenging for families and for project graduation and for other things that are occurring, but that it's not, I mean, it definitely is a possibility. There are other schools that have their graduation in the middle, of the middle of the week. So that is, that is something if you'd like to consider.
Well, just remember that we share the facility with other high schools in the area. So if we're completely independent of our neighboring high schools and using the UNH facilities, then that cost would be a hundred percent borne by us, and that would probably double the cost of using the facility.
We align with Dover High School and Somersworth High School, and we share the cost of setup and breakdown.
Denise?
So do you need a motion at this meeting? Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to set graduation for Friday, June twelfth.
Moved by Denise, or second, seconded by Brian. Further questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, all opposed. Are you abstaining?
Abstaining, yeah.
And the student abstains.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, just continuing, I just wanted to come back to a quick conversation we had at our budget meeting when we were talking about roads. I'm in the process of setting up a meeting with Todd Selig and his staff and having representation from our staff to talk through the proposal we got from VHB. Both Todd and I feel the proposal was excessive. It was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we're, we want to get our collective genius together to figure out if we can do something more cost-effectively. And so that meeting is, was set for the eighteenth, but it's getting changed again, and so I'll keep you posted as we go through time.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So I guess the, and I read through all the reports and everything, and I guess what's confusing to me is I don't know how we can actually do the, I mean, I guess we could do the study, but we don't know whether the bond will pass or not. So it's almost like, oh, and I guess my question was, one of the things that was said at the, at the budget meeting was that if we go ahead and do the study, that whatever recommendations are made, we would have to go ahead and implement them? I just wanted to get clarification around that, because I'm like, well, what happens if the bond doesn't pass? We can't, you know what I mean? It just doesn't make sense.
So first of all, the, the terminal date for this work is two thousand twenty-two. So the bond passing and whatever, whatever the town and school comes to for conclusion in terms of traffic, there's, we have two years to work on that, because the roadwork wouldn't be complete until the end of the, end of the process. And state law is clear that the school system is independent of the towns, so that's why it has to be a collaborative effort. So the towns can't say, you do this, because they don't have the authority. On the other hand, you know, we want to, you make sure that we have the best solution that both sides can afford. So the reason to have the meeting is to kind of work through what is it that we really have to accomplish, and then, you know, what's the cost associated with that, and when does it have to be done? So all of those are part of the conversation that we'll have when we meet with Todd. So the, I don't have direct answers to your question in terms of when, but I do know that it has to be the two groups working together.
I guess I'm still, if the, and I mean, I really hope, hopefully, the bond will pass and it all be good, but if the bond doesn't pass, are we, if we do the study, are we obligated to do some kind of work even without the?
No, the problem, the problem of, of traffic around the school actually has nothing to do with the new school. The problem exists today. The, the issue of congestion exists around the current middle school. So, you know, the bond not passing doesn't, it doesn't really have anything to do with the conversation in front of us.
But it changes what is possible. So, I mean, if the bond didn't pass, you wouldn't have the flexibility of having a new road, so that would change what you could possibly do. That's why I'm, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around even having a conversation, because it's apples and oranges, in my view. If we, if we, if the bond passes, we have new roads that can be used as part of the solution. If the bond didn't pass, we'd be stuck with what we have currently.
Well, not even necessarily so. I mean, you know, if the town has been very open to conversations about traffic patterns around the current school, and we know that that's a problem. So having a conversation with Todd Selig and his, and his leadership team is really just the introduction to a longer conversation over time. So we're not going into that, into that meeting thinking we're going to come up with solutions. We're going into that meeting seeing what's possible, what, you know, fundamentally, what can both sides afford to do.
Can I, well, full disclosure, I'm a Durham Town Councilor, and so, and so, we do,
our CIP runs ten years out, and built into the CIP is our roads program. So when you do a project like this, we, and particularly if you start to say what the town is going to do, you guys are familiar with the school budgeting process, we have a town budgeting process, too. And so I hate to say I don't like surprises, I do like them at Christmas, but when it comes to school and town matters, I don't. So this, you're not obligated, most, actually, any big project of this magnitude, one of the requirements to be done, particularly when it comes to our planning board, is to have a traffic study. And so you're not obligated to do everything in the traffic study, but it gives you the recommendations. And, 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 in the school's case or in UNH's case, we don't have jurisdiction over you, but anybody else, we would then go, when you came before the planning board, we would look at the traffic safety study and see what you're doing. My concern, of course, is you're going to cement, when you begin to, to work on that school area, you're going to cement that area for probably the next fifty to sixty years. So you, you really want to make sure that what you do is done correctly. Now, reading, this is, and I talked to Jim Rizicky about this, and it really isn't, I mean, the town only owns the road, and they're really limited. And I, the study kind of shows where the problem, the areas are, so you kind of know what the existing problems are, and that's kind of the thing where we had, particularly on Dennison backing up on Baghdad Road to Madbury, where you were trying to do the curl to get eight hundred feet, which is in there, so you don't back up. So it, it was hard for me to tell, looking at the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what exactly the scope of study is there. I'm not quite sure, are we modeling to try to figure out if that loop actually works? So I think that's a discussion that needs to be, to be set. Again, while the town can't tell the school what to do, the school can't tell the town what to do either. So for us, generally, a large project of this magnitude, we're going to know, want to know what you do, and it really is, the, the traffic problem, and this is what was brought up in our traffic safety study, the traffic problem of the middle school is caused by the middle school, which is a cooperative section. So Durham is very receptive, and I'm only speaking for myself as one out of nine Town Councilors, but we are receptive to working with the school district to try to make this a successful project, but we do not have the money to do it. And furthermore, since it is a cooperative, it, from our perspective of Durham fiscally, it is, you'll have trouble with the council saying, let's just hand over money, because Lee and Madbury also have a responsibility for the impact of that on a road. So, so again, I, 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 the study is unfortunate that it came up this late, in my mind, but I, I think there is room to work. As Jim was saying, I mean, we know what the problems are. It's like, again, I've already identified the one that's really bad, which is Dennison, Baghdad, Madbury. I think that other one they show down at the bottom of Dennison, I think it is where, is that Garrison, actually. Garrison, you're going to have, like, there's a couple of parking spots that are actually, that are actually permit parking, that you kind of need permission, what are we going to do with that? And then down below, where the people stack up, going into co-drive is the other. So the, the issues that we know are there. The solutions to them are, road-wise, what the town can do with our existing road is not so much. The main thing that's really going to occur is what happens on your property and how you feed into the road. So I think that, that's really the conversation that, that'll go forward.
And I just want to say that the school system and the town of Durham, as well as the Madbury, but in this case Durham, because we're talking about Durham, have always problem-solved together. So the collaborative nature of the two, two entities has, you know, been tried and true over decades, and will continue to work together, and we'll figure this out.
When you look at the preliminary traffic study from the beginning of the year, most of the recommendations were things like changing the direction of traffic flow.
Right.
Changing pavement markings, paint.
Paint is...
Signage. These are things that are not particularly expensive.
Exactly.
Improvements that may make a, a large difference in traffic flow.
You're hitting the very issue, Michael. So we see a report that Todd and I saw this almost concurrently, because he sent it to me almost immediately, and, you know, the company's proposing a hundred and fifty thousand dollar study, and yet, in their initial report, it's exactly as you described, signage, paint, redirection. I don't see why either entity would be paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I think some of it, too, is already, it's, it's redundant, because you've already done the design of that loop that you're beginning to work on to solve particularly the Dennison-Baghdad Road. It's, I mean, I think in that hundred and fifty thousand, I think they're going to come up with what they think is the way to deal with that issue, which, again, is redundant to what you've already done. So I don't see why you pay money to do that.
Yeah, because I think in the design, you know, because, I mean, the thing we've talked about a lot is the queue.
Mm-hmm.
You know, how do you handle that, how do you handle that long queue so it doesn't spill out onto the, to the roads and block traffic, which it does now?
Right.
And, and I think that, and this, you know, I think that needs to be modeled out or something, you know, so there needs to be somewhere done, but it doesn't seem to be a hun, you know, a huge hundred and fifty thousand dollar study. That if, if we, if the queue is, as we anticipate it would be, does it handle the cars that are queued up now? And I think it would, you know, because it's, because it's much long, it's a much longer, it'd be much longer queue than, so it shouldn't, shouldn't back up. But I think we need, we need, you know, so to me, the question is, would that work? Because it seemed, I mean, it seemed, you know, from our calculations, it should work, but I would think you probably need somebody to look at it.
Yeah.
But it's not this big study of all options. I think it's kind of...
Again, I think a lot of the work has already been done. I, the one to me that's also like really terrible, I did this one today, and I, I mean, again, the roads are finite, we can't expand the road into more lanes, is, is co-drive. Going from the high school, making your way up co-drive to the middle school is unbelievably terrible. And the only way to solve it is to have less cars. That's, that's the only way around it. I mean, we cannot, it's all like private property on either side, we can't expand the size of the road, it just can't handle the volume of traffic. I think there are some good things that were in the proposal that was there today. One is having some kind of traffic control at the back of what was the middle school, where the buses are going out, and maybe that's being solved with the new way that they're feeding out into co-drive. But those, again, those recommendations weren't like putting in a new culvert or something like that, which is brutally expensive. So there, I mean, the expensive part really is this part that you control, which is on school property.
Right. Which is part of the project. It's already been defined as part of the project. The bus loop and the parent drop-off is, is part of the forty-nine million dollar project. The, so that discussion, so the point that I tried to make earlier is that this discussion between the town of Durham and the school system is an important discussion, and both sides come into it always with an instinct for problem-solving, not creating new expenses that neither side can afford. So that's what we'll be doing. I just want to come back to this idea. So tonight, you know, the policies are up in my report, because we really wanted to have a discussion. So if we go back to Chief Curz's presentation with Tommy, the SRO, on policy J-I-H-B. So for me, you know, to, to move forward on policy, I need clear direction, and so rather than do a first read again and, and, you know, kind of get ourselves into a spin, there are specific issues that the school board would want me to address on J-H-I-B that I can bring to the policy committee that we can work into the, the policy to bring it back for a first read. So that's really the discussion question I was hoping that you could, you could help guide me on. Because the, we took out that language of the principal shall, but other than that, it's the same policy that's been there right along. Todd?
So this is another one of those. It's kind of a weird night, because I, this, I, as a Town Councilor, I work with the Durham Police Department quite a bit, and so I have a pretty good knowledge of their working. And so when I read what the existing policy is, I'm exceptionally uncomfortable with it, and it has absolutely nothing to do with me looking at the administrative team and And it has absolutely nothing to do with me looking at the administrative team and thinking they're not able to handle something. That's not it at all. It's that I, and the chief brought it up, and I, when I met with the chief, both with Dan and at a parking meeting on Monday, when, this is one of the most extreme levels of problems that occurs, and I think, you know, when we did our tier system, this goes to whatever the highest tier is right away. And so when I read this policy, it doesn't explain really how that's handled, and it makes me really uncomfortable. And that is, I would assume that triggers some kind of a crisis team. And, and when it does, the very first person that should be sitting in that team, or that should not, is the SRO. That's why the SRO is there. And Durham Police Department has an incredible wealth of experience working with students. We're a university town, they do it all the time. And so the reason we have, and again, unlike many districts, the officer that we've placed in, into the schools was very specifically chosen, is a very, very experienced officer. He is a resource. And so as you're sitting there struggling with, how do we approach this, I want the SRO in there giving you advice. I mean, if there was a problem with a student who had a behavioral problem, you wouldn't first try to solve it and then go talk to counseling. You'd have them included in your crisis team. And so the SRO is, should be in there. They'll give you advice, they'll help you work through it, they're really, really good problem solvers, and that isn't included in the policy. The policy right now just says that Suzanne, or whoever the principal is, can go search the car. And it's like, that, that, I feel exceptionally uncomfortable with that. I think, I would like to clarify that the SRO is part of that process, because it gives you a far better resource to work through, and a far better probability, I hope, of coming out with a better outcome. And so that was not included in the policy. That's really why I met with the police, and that really comes more from me having, I think, a lot more experience with what the philosophy of the Durham Police Department is, and what resources they bring to the table.
Well, I mean, can I just ask a question? If you had, because what's crossed out in this policy, I think, which was intended to be added to it, would be the principal designation, you'll have the discretion to engage the police or SRO in the search, which I think was what...
Not in the search.
It's not in the search.
In the counsel. Because if you put, if you put Tommy right into the search, then you're automatically violating procedure, Durham PD procedure. Tommy's going to be, the SRO is going to be in the advice and counsel. I absolutely agree with Al, that should be added into, into the policy.
Okay.
It should be, when you hear the rumor, and you're thinking, what do we do, the SRO is sitting there, right there. He's part of your, again, this doesn't, I guess you got to have a crisis team of some kind, somebody, it's not just Suzanne, somebody comes to your office and says, I think there's a gun in a car, and you say, you know what, I'm going to go walk out and look at the car. That's, it can't be like that. So it's like, again, the SRO should be part of that process from the get-go, and that should be spelled out in the policy.
Is there any other suggestions the board has?
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to see whether this language can be manipulated to deal with your situation. So something like the principal designation, you have the discretion to engage the police or SRO in a, in a possible search, or something?
No, it's not.
No.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't think there's any other conversation. If he can't be involved, to say that he's involved with the search means that if, if, let's say, and we, I just want to clear, we really don't go into a lot of cars, like this is just an exception. So, so if we were going to search in, in a car, if we said that he was involved with the search, and he was there, and something was found, he doesn't have a search warrant, so if we needed to harness his expertise in criminal law and the judicial system, we wouldn't be able to access him anymore. So the idea of consultation, that, yes. And so if, I just want to also say very clearly that I don't know any administrator in any school, if they hear that there's a weapon in the school, that they don't engage the SRO. Like, if I hear anything, we automatically engage the SRO.
But it's not spelled out in the policy.
Correct. So I, I like the language that you spoke of, about consultation, and then, and then we would engage him, but he would need a search warrant in order to actually be part of a search. So I just want to avoid that language.
But you can get the words of wisdom from the SRO, and that has nothing to do with...
Correct.
So if we had a sentence in here that, you know, to, I don't know, would require or encourage or something, consult.
Just would simply say the principal would consult with the SRO when considering a search.
Even it's just, it's having a conversation, we would normally, what we would normally do is just let him know that we were doing this, and sometimes he's standing outside of an office, or outside of a space where he's not engaged in or part of it, but he is there if we need to access him. So it's a little bit different.
So with that, so I guess with that language...
It's a fairly easy change to the policy. Absolutely.
One other, and I don't know if it needs to be addressed in policy, but I think we need to learn more about the, the legal foundation on which the school district has the right to search vehicles on town property, meaning along the road.
Sure. I already, I got that from our attorney between the last meeting, and I'll have that for the board.
Great. So if there's any need to address, whether it be the agreement with the town, or that agreement in the policy, that should be reviewed.
Yeah. Okay. Michael? How many vehicle searches were conducted last school year?
By us? None.
The year before?
One.
My only concern left in this is, is the directive for the principal to search, who will then conduct a search. I think that should be...
May.
Right. I think that should be at the principal's discretion.
Great.
Mm-hmm. Sujessa? Does that give you enough?
It does. Just want to make sure, is everybody exhausted their list? I mean, these are relatively easy fixes to a policy, and we'll adjust the procedures to reflect the changes as well.
I mean, Denise and I are on the committee, is that comfortable? I'm good with it. Are you good with it?
Yeah, I'm just a little confused, because I felt like that was the question that I asked Chief Curz, and he seemed to say no, so I don't know, but we'll go with it.
He's saying, they can't tell you what to do, but they can give you advice.
Right. But when I suggested the word consult, because that's the word I suggested, he seemed to hesitate about that, but we can go with it.
Yeah, no, he would be okay.
He wanted more collaborate, is what he's...
Well, we can use the word collaborate instead of consult.
Maybe collaborate. The principal would collaborate?
I like, I like the term collaborate better, because it means that you automatically are including him in your crisis team. That's what I said to him when we met earlier.
Okay. Great.
Okay.
Suzanne, whatever minor changes I have made as a result of this, I'll make sure you see it.
Okay.
All right. And then much bigger changes as a result of the lengthy conversation we had around facilities use. And I really took the board's advice to heart that evening. Al had very specific suggestions that I incorporated in, into the policy, and then we went through the procedures and made sure that they married up. I think, you know, the most dramatic change is the whole use of the facility by nonprofits who service district children. And so currently, we have a nonprofit fee, if it's not the towns and it's not, it's not ourselves, then we charge, or have been charging. And I'm suggesting that we zero that out, that if they're servicing the district, the only thing we need is their insurance and liability policy. Nonprofits that are outside the district, I'm recommending we continue to charge. And then, of course, for-profits, to continue to charge yet again. The issue of the parent piece, I suggested striking that to zero as well, considering the issue of nonprofits, being consistent. Again, the issue would be documentation of liability insurance, because anybody who's using the building has to have that documentation, otherwise, you know, if something happens, they're not covered. So that's probably the most radical direction in this policy that I took. So the financial impact of going to zero, based on what Jim and I and Todd and Sue could figure out, is maybe $5,000. So it's, it's not a huge financial impact for us to go to zero. The other thing that I would add is that when I did a comparison to our, our usual suspects, Hanover and Portsmouth and Bau and so forth, most of them are not charging the nonprofits that service their district. So this would be consistent with those school systems who we like to compare ourselves to. So again, in the same vein as we just did on the search, are there additional suggestions the board has before we bring it back to the committee? Is there anything that I missed, or is there anything that you feel strongly about that I put in there?
What do you define as nonprofit within the district? Are they based within the district? Or, I know you had mentioned, majority of the kids are from the district?
Majority, majority of the kids that are being serviced. You know, for example, both ORYA and Maximum Velocity have Barrington children, but we see Barrington sort of as an extension of us now, so we don't see that as a big deal. I think Maximum Velocity also reaches out in a bigger geographic area, but the majority of the kids appear to be Oyster River kids. So, yeah, we're not going, and what I'm trying to do here, Brian, is to keep this as simple as possible, you know, but both, any organization that claims nonprofit status, in addition to the insurance, would have to provide documentation, either through the IRS or New Hampshire regs, that they are indeed nonprofit. So they have to document they're nonprofit.
It doesn't exclude them from the ancillary costs that go with it, as far as...
Nope. If the lights, that's in the policy, it's very clear about that. If somebody's using the field and the lights are on, that's 75 bucks an hour. If somebody is using the facility on a Sunday, they're going to still have to pay for the custodial use, because we don't have custodians on Sunday. If they're trying to use, they need a technology person, you know, in Josh's department, they're going to pay for that. So this is strictly related to the facility use, but any costs that are incurred by the district would be incurred by the people who are using it. But essentially, it would be a huge benefit to large-scale groups like Maximum Velocity and ORYA, who, you know, really are trying to do something really great for our kids. And so, you know, we want to make sure that they can get access. Now, in terms of the towns, the three towns, they're first at the table. So, you know, when Durham Rec comes forward, and they want to use X number of times, then that's in the policy we've embedded, let's get the big users at the table, and make sure that everybody can get as much as they can possibly get of our facilities. So one of the, one of the big issues that I'm going to face on the 18th with the town of Lee is that we committed to Durham and Madbury and Lee about not charging them for the use of the facilities, but then they had a Subcommittee on Sustainability beat on a Sunday, and, you know, that committee got pretty upset, because I would have to bring in a custodian, it was going to cost like 360 bucks or so. And I waived the fee, because it was causing too much tension between the town and the school system. You know, the, the solution to that is, don't meet on a Sunday, you know, meet in the evening or what have you. But that, that might be something I'll have to come back and talk to you about later, because it's all the same taxpayer money. You know, if it's, it's one pocket or the other, it's the same, you know, the same people are paying the taxes, and, and whether we incur the cost, or the town incurs the cost, is the same taxpayer. So there's more to come around that, because I expect that'll be a conversation that's coming from the towns.
There was a section added about access control to the buildings.
Yep.
I'm curious, how many keys, key cards, et cetera, belonging to non-district personnel are out in our community?
Used to be a lot. It's much less than it used to be.
Yes, sir. It used to be a lot, but we're trying to funnel everybody through the electric, electronic card access system. So we're able to disable that access level at any time through our computer. So we like people to have card access instead of physical keys.
Three, the reason we did that, Michael, is three and four years ago, we became aware of the keys circulating, you know, so we handed it off to one group. Oh, you want to use the building? They give them the key that were specifically for that group, and it just became something that became out of control. But using the key card system, we now can control it.
And so those are assigned to individual people, not to organizations?
Well, not exactly. So...
Individual person in the organization.
Correct. Everything is assigned to a person, a physical person that's in charge. So in the event, just take ORYA and Maximum Velocity and Durham Parks and Rec, they have a lock box at every school location with one card in it, and they're responsible for that particular code on that lock box for that school only.
So it's not assigned to an individual person, it's assigned to the organization?
Well, it's assigned to an organization, but also the person that signs that out, that their name is on that as well. So it says Maximum Velocity and the, the directors of that, of that name on our system, same thing with ORYA.
Right, but those, those are not the individuals that are physically using the key card necessarily?
I'm correct, but they're the ones that are responsible for it.
So damage in the policy is spelled out, and vandalism is spelled out. And our facilities have plenty of cameras at this point, and when we're not in, like, for any of our gymnasiums, as an example, those cameras are on after school hours and into the weekends, because that was also an issue that we faced, Michael, where we had some significant damage in a bathroom one time, and we weren't able to chase after who owned it, because nobody, you know, wanted to own it. And so now we are much more meticulous about that as well.
I think that in the procedure, in the section about fees that describes which groups will or will not be charged, I think we need to take another scrub through there to make sure that's consistent with what we're saying now about nonprofits serving the Oyster River community.
Yeah, use the same language.
I think it's, yeah, yeah, I think, I think it's just a little bit inconsistent with, with what we're saying in the, in the policy. And then if you had a group hypothetically that, that is based outside of the school district, but is trying to run a program that is going to predominantly serve Oyster River kids...
That's the key. It's not so much about the geographical locations, it's about who they're serving.
It's about who they're serving, yeah.
Yeah. So if the group was based in Dover, and they were 100% Oyster River kids, we would treat them as if they're our service provider.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I just had a couple...
Do you think that needs to be clarified? Or do you think that's clear?
I, I think, I guess I might have to go back and take a look at it again, read in detail again. I think it, it should be clarified, if it's...
We can look at that paper in the policy committee, too, and make sure that coordinates.
I just had a couple things I want to say. I think as it's portrayed here, it looks like that if you're nonprofit within the district, you would pay nothing for lights.
No. If you read the policy itself, it says people will pay for the use of lights and, and services.
Okay, I guess I'm looking at the fee schedule. If you look at that, it looks, it looks to me like it's zero.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Okay, so I think I would correct that.
Where do you, where do you see the...
Right here.
Oh, I see. Got it. Yep.
So, so I mean, it's...
It says 75 an hour, but there's a zero on the very end. Got it.
Yeah, so I think, correct that. And I just think, I just think it's, it's really good that we took a look at this, and I appreciate Dan, you kind of pushing us to do this, because I think this sends a message that we really are here to serve the community, we're here to invite, invite use of our facilities, that this is a good thing. And obviously, it creates maybe some danger of wear, but I think that, you know, it, it just says, you know, you're welcome to use it, and essentially, you've, you've, these aren't necessarily our gyms, this is like the communities, Jim, paid for by the community, and I think that's the message that this sends. So I'm really glad we're doing this.
Great. If something occurs to you from tonight, and you, you thought, I mean, I wish I said that, just send me an email, and I'll make sure the policy committee sees it.
Jim, on the, pardon me, on the issue of custodial fees, that's not currently on the schedule, correct, the fee schedule?
No, it's in the body of the policy.
So we should probably add that as a, as a horizontal...
Yeah.
So the top line?
Because like the lights, sorry.
Top line, isn't it?
It's the top right here, is it?
Top of the fee schedule.
Oh, I'm sorry, there it is. So I think what, good, okay, so, right, it is there, but what's not, what's not clear is that when it's charged...
That, that top section for staff and AV applies to everybody regardless of...
Correct.
Right. So...
I agree, it might be good.
In other words, I guess what I'm getting at is somehow we need to add to this schedule that if you use a building on a Sunday, you will be charged X number of...
Well, it's not just Sunday, though, because, you know, people use the facilities when we, we're not open, so...
Okay.
You know, like, for example, there's a time all of our custodians work days. If somebody wants to use the facility in the evening, that means we have to have somebody there to open the building, to take care of the building, make sure that, you know...
So we have to express that somehow, I think. Because, you know, to, to avoid surprises like you were describing earlier, where there was a group from Lee using a, it sounds to me like they didn't anticipate that charge.
Right. Because we had come to, remember, a year and a half ago, we had come to the agreement that we weren't going to charge the town... charge the towns for the use of our facilities. I wasn't anticipating that the towns were going to use it on a Sunday, quite frankly. And, you know, I'm not embedded in charging them, quite frankly, because I would expect they would do the same for us, you know, that if we needed to use their facilities, they wouldn't charge us. And in fact, we just came out of the Lee Safety Complex and they didn't charge us. But it was during the daytime. If we wanted to use it on Sunday and they're saying, "Well, you know, you're responsible for it on Sunday," then I think we should reciprocate, you know. And, you know, I want to make sure the working relationship between the three towns and the school district is always optimal. I don't want to get into crazy, useless, kind of bang-your-head-against-the-wall fights. So, you know, if, you know, if the Lee selectmen say, "Hey, Jim, we would do the same for you on Sunday, then all things are equal. We'll come out of it whole," I guess. That's what I want to make sure, that there's more than a working relationship, there's an interdependency between the three towns.
Yeah. I mean, like, if you guys use the rink, we would charge you for the... Because it costs us money to run the rink. And so, like, the hockey team, we would charge to use the rink. It's not because we're trying to profit off it, it's just because it actually costs us.
Fine, if Rachel turned on the lights.
All right. But if you guys wanted to use, like, Woodridge Tennis Courts, we'd say, "Sure."
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I think that's the piece where, you know, it's... I know it's not people interacting, it's organizations interacting, but if organizations acted like people do, and I think that solves a lot of our issues between the three towns, with the three towns.
So do you need... Do you think any other clarifying language is necessary?
So on the issue of custodial fees, let's say on weekends, when we wouldn't otherwise have them on staff or scheduled, I guess I'm a little confused as to how we determine who gets charged and who... So if it was a town using a gym, we would... It would be an in-kind kind of arrangement?
That's the other thing, is Rachel needed to run a program on Sundays. Okay. You know, we trust Rachel. She's, you know, the director of recreation. She's representing the town. She'll take care of our facility. Then Jim can issue her a card and she can go in and take care of it as long as she picks up after herself. So there's the other issue. We've had users who didn't pick up after themselves. And Jim's staff has spent an extraordinary amount of time cleaning up after people who said they would take care of themselves. So for a couple of years, we went through this building's messy. You need, you know, Jim would call them and try to be the, you know, partner in crime. Eventually, Jim came in and said, "I can't do this anymore, Jim. Why don't you... Are you okay with my charging them?" I said, "Absolutely. You've given them two years' worth of, you know, let's work together, let's clean the facility after you're done with it." And in the end, it just became an issue of we had to charge them.
So are we no longer charging... I guess what I'm getting at is, are we charging anybody for custodial fees anymore? Because I'm hearing we are.
It sounds like everybody except for towns.
Gotcha. Okay. That's what I... Okay. So that's what I think should be somehow made clearer.
Okay. So I'll just marry the language that's in the policy and put it in the fee schedule because the policy says it. And we'll just make sure it's clear at the top.
Right.
Okay. Sure.
That's right. So that, you know, any program serving the community can look at the fee schedule and reasonably understand that, you know, if I'm booking, you know, two hours in a gym on a Sunday, this is what I have to budget for, you know. That's what I'm getting at.
All right.
The... I don't know about Medbury, but I know Lee uses the Mastway Gym for their deliberative session.
With the what? I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
Lee uses the Mastway Gym for the deliberative session on Saturday.
Yeah.
Is that...
What have we historically done on Lee using the Mastway School for deliberative session, Jim?
Good point. Because since we don't issue any one-person card access or... And facility access for that one day because nobody's accountable, we have a custodian come up, stay the whole day because there's massive amounts of people open. Our building is unsecured. We feel comfortable having somebody there, and we haven't charged them.
Have not.
Have not charged them.
Exactly.
Does Medbury use this?
No. They use the town office. It's only... Durham and Lee are pretty regular users of our facilities. Medbury tends to stay in the Medbury complex. It's not that they have it, but Mike...
Big enough? It's big enough or the group's small enough?
We only use half of the room.
Really?
Okay. So we all set? Are there other changes?
David wanted to have a thought, I guess.
Medbury has asked to use this facility sometimes for childcare during town meetings, and we've always approved that without issue.
Great. So I think we're at 98% there from the conversation we're having tonight. And so we'll bring it back to policy and we'll capture those changes and bring it back to you for your consideration for first read.
Great.
Thank you.
One quick question. When does that... Since that fee schedule is an R doc, does that...
That R doc has to be approved by the board.
It does? Okay. So those fees will go into effect once we all...
Once we have the policy approved.
It'll be a first and a second read in the... Okay.
Okay. I think that goes through all your items.
It does. How about that?
Yeah.
There was a lot there.
Sue.
I just have two items this evening. My traditional budget review. This is for the current budget. It's October. We're just starting out. If this is in line with where we were at the same time last year, nothing to be concerned about. Questions? And then the other item I have is the tuition rates. I put in my letter, we traditionally do this for Forest Park, but there is no more Forest Park. But we still do need to have this rate set because we sometimes have students from other areas that we need to have a rate set. So... And actually, UNH asked that we still provide them with that rate.
And I had a parent ask about it today.
Excuse me?
I had a parent ask about it today.
Okay. So those are the rates that were calculated, again, using the... Our MS-22 data and then the October 1 dates.
And you need a motion on that rate?
I need a motion to approve these.
Is this the one that the... Are these the numbers that this need uses or does Department of Education figure out their own?
They figure out their own because the cost per pupil is on actual. This is on proposed.
Okay.
And it's very close, actually. I checked that. It's very close to what the actuals come out at.
So motion, yeah?
I'll make a motion to approve the tuition rates.
Moved by Al. Second, my Brian.
This is for the current school year, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Ready vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor to the student rep in favor. Okay, this approved?
Six.
Six, I'm sorry.
Six.
Yeah.
Ghost.
Student center report?
So last week, the senior class organized a spooky social for Halloween, and there was a large turnout, which was great. And tomorrow's the coffee house, tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, which is a fundraiser for Mouth of the River. The Barrington Information Night was last night for eighth graders and their families. And next week, on Thursday, there is a world language festival where we present our plays that we've been working on. And there's a lot of sports announcements. So the boys' cross-country team finished as Division II runner-up and fifth at the meet of champions, which is out of all divisions. And the team qualified for the New England's for the 10th consecutive year, which is the longest streak that we have in history in New Hampshire. The girls' cross-country team placed fourth place in Division II, 11th at the meet of champions, and Lily Duty qualified individually for the New England Championships. For field hockey, they had their best season. They barely missed out on the Division II playoffs. They have a record of 5 to 9 to 0, and they lost out in a three-way tiebreaker for the final playoff spot. The golf team finished 21 to 4 with all-state... With four all-state golfers, Jack Poitras and Ty Mountain first team, and Declan and Clayton Dobna on the second team. The volleyball team lost in the quarterfinals to Plymouth. They finished the season strongly with 13 to 4. Corinne Quagleyry achieved two milestones, 500 digs and 150 aces. The girls' soccer team lost in the Division II quarterfinals to Bo 1 to 0, and there was a team of only three seniors, which they finished 10 to 7 to 1. Although the unified soccer team didn't have any wins this year, there was a large turnout for partners signing up. And there was a lot more interest in the unified sports. And lastly, the boys' soccer team played in the Division II semifinal today versus Lebanon, and they finished the regular season by 11 to 2 to 3. And they won their quarter round versus Kursurg on Saturday by a score of 3 to 0. And that's it for the sports. They didn't win.
Oh.
Yasmin, can I have a copy of that for the minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks.
And do you know if the... On the Barrington Information Night, do students speak to the kids that they do?
We had two students come and speak. So for Barrington students, we tried something a little different. We had, a few weeks ago, the eighth grade came to the high school. We had a panel of about, I think it was about 12 students, speak to them and take them on tours, a short tour. And then last evening, we had the families come, and we had two students, two seniors, speak with families, along with myself, Kim Felch, Sean Peschel, Mark Milliken, and Mike McCann. We all were there to answer questions and to speak. But we had Joe Morrell and Grace Smith were there for seniors.
Yes, well, true. How was the turnout overall?
It was good. The turnout was good. We had... We stayed behind and answered questions that families had. And we just... We really encourage students to come and to do the tour if they're interested. And then we will have one more visit before the lottery, where we go to the middle school, Barrington Middle School. And I will... Andy usually comes with me. And then we bring some more students to the middle school, to Barrington Middle School, and we'll...
They still do the lottery? I thought that ended.
They didn't this year, but it's in their policy. If we ended up with more kids than... That were interested, then they would use the lottery.
When Tom and I were leaving last night, I noticed some of the parents were gazing at the enormous cafeteria. So they were awed. So I don't know if that helps, but...
Well, everything helps.
Maybe they taste the food. Maybe they'll... It'll win them over. So...
So, so I... Board discussion of the 2021 budget. Dr. Morris, what you?
I wanted to take another shot at the allocation level, just to kind of give you a sense of what it would look like based... Sorry, I'm gonna give one to Yasmin. You know, the questions that came up at the end, because I wasn't prepared to talk about revenue, I'm still not prepared to talk about revenue, but I wanted to show you if we were talking about it on an expenditure side only, how I would bring it to 3.5%, which is sort of the board's goal, but not exactly. But it's guiding me right now. And so what I would do is the shift, the $523,000 bond payment from the facilities account to the warrant, and then maintain the integrity of the board's goal, understanding that that percentage, when I have the revenue, is impacted. Make any sense?
So technically, all the warrants had to be included in the 3.5%.
They are. So that's what I intended to do.
Cut back on facilities.
Yep. The projects. Yeah. We would have less projects, but we would have the money to pay the bond. And it would stand as a warrant. And as Al alluded to, it would... The bond payment would be there, and we don't exceed the board's goal.
So it was 1.9... I'm pulling this out of the back of my brain. The CIP budget was 1.9 million or something like that. So is that less now? Did you reduce the number of projects?
I have conceptually reduced the number of projects with Jim and Sue. But again, this is just one side of the ledger. We have to wait for those revenues to see what the exact number of projects we would reduce by. But for an expenditure-only budget, I reduce the capital projects.
So you're just waiting to see where 523,000 is?
Well, I'm waiting to see how the revenue spreads out from the state.
And that bond warrant part, that is... That is the first year's interest payment.
Interest-only payment.
On the bond, which will be included in the warrant as well as the total cost of the project.
Yes.
So the second year would be similar payment or would be...
It's much bigger. It's 1.2 or something. And that's assuming that the bond comes in at 3.5% still. So, you know, the way that the interest rates have been falling, I still think we're on a very conservative track in terms of projecting the interest.
So going forward, I'm just trying... Because what I've been saying is that we're going to increase the CIP to 3 point... Or something like 3.4... I forget the figure and then drop it.
Correct. And I think that's...
But this looks like what we're going to have to do is increase the bond warrant...
That's right.
...by that amount. And so we're not going to have all this money for CIP that we thought we would have.
We won't have as much money as we had, but we'll still have money for CIP.
Yeah, okay, okay. So it's just... It's built into the budget in a different way.
That's right.
Because you couldn't have all that money for the CIP plus the money for the bond.
And that's the error I made on our workshop.
Okay, got it.
Because I showed that twice, and Michael said, "Well, that comes out to be 4.6%." And he was absolutely right because I showed it poorly.
Please.
So, and again, that makes perfect sense. I hate to keep saying this, but if the bond does not pass, then you will have reduced that 400...
Well, our budget, instead of 3.5%, will be 2.4%.
Okay. That's... So it would be 2.4%.
So the bond war...
Be easy on me, Michael.
This is... You're gonna send this one to Sue anyhow. So the bond war is going to say, "We're gonna sell X dollars for the middle school project, and we're going to raise and appropriate $523,000 or whatever it is for the first bond payment."
Yep.
That bond payment will depend on what the interest rate actually is when the bond is sold.
Correct.
Will the amount that gets raised for that, will it adjust automatically? Or is it... It's 523...
Will go in your budget, and that's what it will be. If it's less, you won't use it, but...
If it's less than that, then we have positive variance. And if it's more than that, then we have a problem.
Right. Well, we're using 3.5, so I hope it's not more.
Yeah, can't imagine.
So think of a law that just gives us permission to spend that amount of money if needed.
Right, right, and I was, I was trying to understand where the risk for the interest rate-
Right. If we come in less, which right now it looks like we would be, a lot less, yeah, where would that, does that go into reserves, does that go back to taxpayers?
It ends up being fund balance, it ends up being fund balance.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. So I just wanted to put that slide out, because I thought it was a better representation than I gave you on the workshop.
Just a question about, like, when will we know about the estimated insurance, health insurance? When is that number gonna?
May. You're talking about what the actual is as opposed to guaranteed maximum?
Well, don't they give you a first number, and then?
Yep, we have that, that's 8.4%.
That's eight, okay, we have that, huh?
Yep, and that's built into this proposal.
Okay.
And then in May, it may be 8.4% or it may be less, depending on what it, what they actually calculate our cost to be.
Mm-hmm. So what I should be saying to people is we're, we're building up the account to accommodate the insurance payments within that 3.5%, but it is in all going into the CIP, which I think is what we were saying before.
Well, and I was saying that too, Tom, and that's until I talked to our attorney, and they said, no, it has to set outside for this first warrant, because I initially carried it in Jim's line, and then Sue and I talked to the bond attorney, and they said, no, it has to be carried inside the warrant, and that's, I didn't adjust that figure. So the, the statement that you and I are making to people, that the, the bond payment will be built into a 3.5% budget is a true statement, it's just not necessarily-
Still the projection is 3.5% over the next-
Five years.
Five years, okay.
Yep.
Michael?
So one of the projects that was proposed in the CIP is the conversion of the junior corps to a couple classrooms. So as we work through this process, I'd be curious, from the student's perspective, how that impacts life in that.
Um, I don't-
I don't need to put you on the spot, so.
No, that's okay. For the junior corps, I don't, personally, I don't see anybody really take advantage of that spot, it's like senior corps, so if that would like happen in senior corps, that would create issues for the senior class, but to be honest, I don't think that would be much of an issue if that would happen with the junior corps.
My daughter hated the idea, if that has me, she said that the sophomores and juniors go up there, but I don't, I take that with a grain of salt.
Yeah, if you go through the high school, you'll see the seniors absolutely habitate the senior corps, but in the second floor, it's much more fluid.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm also, again, looking back at the, the enrollment forecast for next year, in particular at Mastway, right now there are 18 classes planned for Mastway next year. Is there room for additional classroom class at Mastway, should enrollment require that?
Yes, I think the space will be utilized, but we are currently-
Got to come to the microphone, Misty.
We currently are very fortunate to utilize the space for the computer lab, but we are very open-minded that that space may need to be utilized differently if we do have four kindergartens.
And that's in a, that's in a classroom?
Yes, it's a regular-sized classroom.
I haven't been in that space since-
I would love to show you around.
It was in the white spot in the hallway before, yeah, thanks. And, I, I really liked the way that, that Josh presented the life cycle and replacement plan for-
Would you like to do that on me?
I, I, well, I specifically, like, I think we should try to take that approach in more areas, but specifically transportation.
Sure, that'd be easy to do.
We're looking at, at large capital investments or large leases that are on a cycle, I think we should understand what, that would help us, that kind of visualization would help us understand the life cycle of, of buses and vans, and it would help us plan for things like, like the GPS system that, that we had to remove from the budget this year.
Yeah, you know, and I, I got to say that Sue and I have seen that proposal from transportation now for probably five straight years, and our district geographically is such that we're not convinced it would work. I mean, you go through this district with a cell phone and, and see how many times you lose your signal completely, and so every time it comes up, we say to Lisa, okay, so let's get some of this stuff in from the vendor and, and put it on some buses and try it out. So until I'm convinced it, I mean, on paper, it's one of those things that looks really good, but the reality is, the geography of this district is impossible for us to get radio signals through. So we're putting repeaters on the middle school in order to be able to talk to a bus that can then talk to a bus in another part of the district in order to get a signal through. So that's why I keep on pushing that one off, I'm, I want the vendor to prove it works, and so far, they haven't stepped up, so.
Okay. What's that?
This is not necessarily budget-related, but it sort of is. Given, given where we are with enrollment projections for both, both elementary schools next year, I could see us in a position of saying, we want to have over enrollment move to the other, other, other elementary school in a certain grade, as we've done in the past. And I, I wondered if, if we would consider, or maybe we already do this, asking kindergarten parents at registration if they would consider voluntarily enrolling their student at the other school if it met smaller class sizes.
We can do that.
Okay.
I have a que, just a comment.
David?
I don't want to get into too much of this.
No, I just want to say that don't go, the numbers that you have are, were the long-range planning committee numbers from last year, you're going to get revised numbers at the first school board meeting in December, so just know that the numbers that you have, I have a draft of the updated numbers, and it's much more in line, because those numbers are already a year old at this point, and they're always adjusted based on current enrollment.
Okay, we're, we're off the topic of budget right now.
I just wanted to mention that, just not to get too concerned about that.
You tell me if you want me to speak on that.
Okay.
Thanks for doing that.
Then we'll, then we'll move on, because, okay.
Okay, we, we've discussed when we register kindergarten families, registering them to Oyster River, happening at both schools, but with the knowledge that they are enrolling their students in our district, and based on numbers, in the summertime, we would make the decision about who goes to which building by being able to look at where they live, so that we don't have those issues of the cross-busing that we've had in the years past. So that's something that we've talked about, to make sure that everyone knows that we, we have to see, and if our numbers come in, they go to the school where they think, and if not, we make adjustments, but that way we don't have somebody who moves right next to Moheramet have to go to Mastway because they enrolled two weeks after somebody who lives farther away.
Yeah. And that's, that's why, Michael, this year, we didn't do any cross-traffic in the kindergarten class, because we delayed and then made the decision, so we could make the best decisions possible for the parents as well as the school system.
Right. So somebody could walk in here, thinking this is their school, they go to register them because the neighborhood they're in, you could say, no, you're a Mastway student. I mean, they just come here because they think it's, it may be, as the crow flies, quickest, quickest, nearest place.
And we do that, both, both offices speak to each other literally every month about what's happening with enrollment, and what the numbers are, and where people need to go, and we, when families call us, we always send them to the SAU to make sure they know, you know, where their address is located and what those mean for numbers.
I think the example that Michael used is the one where a parent moves in who's, could walk to this school, and this happened to us two school years ago, and another parent moved in at the Mastway, and, and we, and that parent went to Mastway, and then the same thing happened on the other side of the, of the district, and that person came here, and, you know, we realized, you know, that is just crazy, and it's, it's, it's crazy for the parents, it's crazy for the kids, and it's crazy for the transportation system, so we, we tried this new system this year, and it, it worked really well.
It also helps with the families who are enrolling a kindergartner and someone in another grade, and one grade might be over-enrolled, but the other one isn't, and then are we splitting up families? We don't ever want to do that, so this allows us to really balance all those needs.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good, thanks. Superintendent's evaluation, press?
I begun my self-evaluation, and all honesty, I've only begun it.
Okay, keep that in motion. So we have, moving down to approving the middle school winter coaches volunteers, and I didn't see any department head replacements in my backup, was there any?
There was, like, somebody had resigned and somebody was replaced, wasn't there?
Maybe I missed that.
Kathy Stinson had been replaced.
Kathy Stinson and Tim Lawrence will be stepping up in her place.
Sharing a department head?
Not sharing.
Breaking one.
Well, yeah, so she started the school year, and now she has stopped, and then Tim Lawrence will begin, so, so she has some, some of the stipend has been moved over to her, Tim Lawrence.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the Oyster River Middle School and High School Winter Coaches Volunteers and Department Head.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. Discussion on this? Hearing down, all in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor, those are approved. Manifests were read by Brian and me before the meeting, so moving to public comment.
I have a committee.
I'm sorry, committee, I have the-
Go ahead, you can go first.
Sustainability met right before this meeting, I have to say, it was much more peaceful than the public hearing I had Monday on Page Throw. A couple of things, one, they were looking over the environmental sustainability policy, and one of the ideas brought forward was actually the environmental sustainability from Boulder, Colorado, which I really like, so Christina Del Chino is gonna work on the wording, and I think that eventually we'll make an appointment with you guys for a policy committee and bring it to you guys. The other thing, it sounds like it's late already with the New Hampshire School Board Association, they had a, what they were talking about today was a call to climate change action, which is a resolution, we don't ever do resolutions, I think, on the school side, we do it on the town side, but the suggestion I had was that, in terms of climate change action, maybe that's something for next year, I guess would have to be, that we, if we so desired to bring it forward to the New Hampshire School Board Association.
Is that being presented to them at their delegate assembly?
Uh, no.
Because it is, you can just have Tom?
I, I don't think they're, they're not ready yet for the whole thing, they're trying to do wording, and since it's close, I would wait. I know that the town of Durham, we've already begun to put that in policy of how we are gonna adapt to climate change, so that's something to keep an eye out. And then one more thing that they talked about, which they're debating, it's like, what did Jim Rezicki, I wish he was still here, I can't, life hacks, I think he called it, like, people that come up with really good ideas on, like, sustainability, that we kind of publicize those, so, and give credit to people who kind of thought of it, and that was it.
Denise?
As I already mentioned, Long Range Planning Committee did meet, met on October 23rd, and Lisa Allison will be presenting her annual report at the first school board meeting in December.
Okay. Committee, reports? Okay. Public comment?
Hey, good evening, everybody, Bevy Cato from Madbury here. I just want to get clarity, so are we not charging parents that are gonna use the building for tutoring purposes?
If the board approves it, in the, in the, what, based on my recommendations, if the board approves that, that would be accurate.
That was an exciting recommendation that I heard, I was supposed to go back to Town Hall and do some baking, but we'll have to wait till tomorrow, because I stayed, so I hope you would. I would also look to, what I did in here is, if you keep with the commercial binder, it's pretty expensive for a tutor doing this on the side, you know, a bona fide tutor, not a student doing a tutoring, I would, you know, be curious if you guys would consider, I don't need to know now, you know, homeowner's insurance, my kid, if John disturbed a desk or whatever.
Your homeowner's insurance won't apply, apply to a, a school setting.
It does not?
No.
Okay. Well, anyhow, I'm glad I heard that recommendation, I also had to laugh when you were talking, Dr. Morris, that some of your-
That happens a lot.
I'm sorry?
That happens a lot.
Oh, yeah, well, you used the word crazy, some of your decision, not yours in particular, but some of the school board policies or procedures were crazy, like, why have a Madbury resident go all the way over there, but, you know, in hindsight, some things are crazy. Well, I've been trying to figure out what's going on with the old charges, when you guys charged me for tutoring for my kid, and I'd go to my, I'm a finance chair for the Disability Rights Center, I'd ask them, am I crazy? The school building's open, I don't get it, I'm a deputy treasurer for Madbury, the church, the historical society, I'd say, hey, what do you guys think? And they all thought, if the building's open, why am I being charged? And I think both sides of the table last school meeting said the same thing, we're not here for profit. So I would hope you guys take this and look at it, maybe it was crazy to charge a parent who was trying to get their kid up to reading level, when the school was open, it was before 5 o'clock, it was just a hall down the road here, down one of these corridors, why did I get charged? Anyhow, I would look and would like to propose to reimburse parents that were being charged, I have a lot of friends curious and following this, I'm happy to hear what you've proposed, and I look forward to seeing some more progress with it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Other public comment? Okay, future meetings, we have the 20th, we've eliminated the 21st, is that correct,